Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, November 25, 2024. Would Clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross? Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle, President?
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business will be presentations. We have two to be presented. Councilman Mosley?
Maybe we go to the next one. My staff is bringing the proclamation in right now.
Okay. Then let's do the ones to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend the winners of the 2024 Greenfield Community Awards and congratulates Greenfield Organized Against Drugs on their successful year. And Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, December 1st, 2024 to be Gino Mazza Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The proclamations have been approved. We do have one from Councilwoman Smith. We'll take hers once she arrives, so we'll move on to public comment. I would like to remind everyone of the rules the Council states that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council. Profanity is not permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronaldin Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bill Suver, and Kuzco Peru, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2028. A key initiative, one of them, is to get the U.S. Supreme Court to go pro vote-by-voter verification for homes. And the second major initiative that we are advancing is that the U.S. Congress go anti the Electoral College with an amendment to the Constitution. Concerns of this council are clearly information and intelligence for the city. I think a primary job of national, state, and local government is to give us optimal information and intelligence. In parallel, I do public comments primarily not to procure for identity politics. I think that's something that the D.P. and R.P. do, but to provide, rather, the best information at the highest level of intelligence you can manage on a subject. Example, city, country, racial, ethnic, gender group, R-E-G-G. One, is the information what is key? N-N-R-E-G-G claim true? Say, Pittsburgh bias exists against X-Y male men. Verified using a minimum of one offline, one online, one interview source or sources. Two, is the information expressed in an intelligent way, not using excess verbiage and illogic as in the 90-minute for November 2024 numerically spare Pittsburgh budget riff rap? Three, is the information in the claim important because stronger than other R-E-G-G claims? Say, only bias exists against XX female women. Four, is the information important because it is so to an R-E-G-G in-group? Five, is the information important because it may be so or should be so to an R-E-G-G out-group? Any say outies need to know? Six, because not widely disseminated throughout the city? Seven, because based on achievement rather than a script of assumptions? And eight, because not brought in print, post, or pronunciation pronouncements of this information? And I think that the R-E-G-G claim to indigenous, Aboriginal, of indigenous and Aboriginal peoples to the geography underneath the University of Pittsburgh Cathedral of Learning, using the principles of indigenous ancestral land priority, constitutional provision, and treaty agreements satisfies information intelligence criteria 1 through 8.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak at this time, please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of papers. We'll begin with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Ms. President.
Morning.
Got a whole bunch today.
Councilperson Sharlin presents Bill Number 1223, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement that will amend Resolution 97 of 2024, which authorized a professional services contract between the City of Pittsburgh and UPMC Benefit Management Services, Inc., doing businesses, work partners, EAP, life solutions for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Employee Assistance Program by extending the contract for one year, increasing the approved amount by $49,500 for a new total cost not to exceed $99,000. Bill 1224, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 95 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement with P&amp;A Group for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, COBRA, program by adding $165,000 and extending the contract for three years for a new total cost not to exceed $180,000 over the course of four years. And Bill 1225, Resolution Providing for a Professional Agreement with Lewis and the Trower Consulting to provide strategic planning and training to the commission over one year at a total cost not to exceed $15,000.
And that takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1226, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement or agreements with a Step Up Veterinary, Inc., for professional licensed veterinary services to the city's Department of Public Safety Bureau of Animal Care and Control at an overall cost to the city not to exceed $292,390.48.
And that takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance, Asset Management and Technology. Councilman Mosley?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1227, Resolution Amending Resolution 845 of 2023, which authorized an agreement or agreements with a center to upgrade the city's customer relationship management system and related capabilities and processes by increasing the approved amount by 500... I'm sorry. By $585,755.33 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,095,755.33 over three years. Bill Number 1228, Resolution Amending Resolution 903 of 2021, authorizing the mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Cartograph, now doing business as Open Gov, Inc., to meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh by increasing the approved amount by $80,644.40 for an amended total cost not to exceed $1,843,792.94 over 10 years. Bill 1229, Resolution Amending Resolution 341 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Granicus, Inc., in a form approved by the city solicitor for website content management by increasing the approved amount by $211,613 for an amended total cost not to exceed $495,608 over three years. And Bill Number 1230, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with E-Docs Technologies, LLC, for the implementation of an enterprise-wide content management system, ECM, to serve as the central platform for managing all digital content across city departments. Total cost is not to exceed $3 million over one year.
And on behalf of Councilwoman Gross, does someone be willing to offer a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bills 1227 and 1228?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both bills will be on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda. And then, Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1231, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for the purpose of supporting the Urban Redevelopment Authority's Homewood Avenue Revitalization Program. Bill 1232, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2025 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan for All Council Districts. Bill 1233, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Trek Development, Inc., or a Related Entity for the Sale of a 2B subdivided portion of Block 25 S, Lot 112, in the 5th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. 2829 Bedford Avenue, Council District 6, at no cost to the city. Bill 1234, Resolution Authorizing the Adoption of the Manchester Chateau Transit Revitalization Investment District Phase 1 Implementation Plan and Related Agreements, Council District Number 6. And Bill 1235, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the U.R.A. of Pittsburgh and Jamal McDonald for the sale of Block 174B, Lot 202, 13th Ward, Mount Vernon Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1236, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Maria A. Pendrow Thompson and her attorney, Rabner Law Offices, P.C., for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1237, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Cassandra Hosky and her attorney, Rabner Law Offices, P.C., for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $75,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1238, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Swad Ibrahim and their attorneys, Contos, Menjean, Killian, and Hassan, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1239, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kush T. Patel and his attorneys, Wilmer and Tyler Rico, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1240, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Iron City Ventures, LLC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1241, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Sarah Pratt and her attorneys, H.K.M. Employment Attorneys, LLP, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $130,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1242, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gordon M. Brown and his attorney, Rabner Law Offices, P.C., for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $200,000 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1243, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Frost Brown Todd, LLC, for Legal Services in Connection with a Sports Facility Usage Fee Tax Dispute for an Amount Not to Exceed $27,236 over one year. Bill 1244, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Joanna Obazor for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 in Full in Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1245, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales Items A- through Q. 4331 Dakota Street, Council District 6; 251 Brereton Street, Council District 7; 0 Brereton Street, Council District 7; 5369 Warble Street, District 9; 5217 Atron Way, District 7; 521 Kendall Street, District 7; 753 Chaucer Street, District 9; 0 Bryson Street, District 9; 0 Bryson Street, District 9; 0 Millbridge Street, District 3; 2929 Zephar Avenue, District 2; 0 Ayton Street, District 1; 239 East Jefferson Street, District 6; 1440 Sandusky Street, District 6; 0 Sunset Avenue, District 1; and 1637 Maryland Street, District 5. Bill Number 1246, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 10 of the City Code, Acceptance of Gift to the City, the Mayor, and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to accept a donation from Veronis of Professional Services to conduct an assessment of data security risks to the City of Pittsburgh at an estimated market value of $40,000. And further, to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Veronis for such professional services, there is no cost to the city. Bill 1247, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget enter into an agreement or agreements with Bloomberg Philanthropies for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities Initiative in the amount not to exceed $120,000 for the city's innovation team project. And Bill 1248, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the 2024 Community Development Program, and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by increasing design, construction, and inspection services by $75,000 to account for federal highway administration funding being received at no cost to the city.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to motion to waive Rule 8 so that Bill 1248 appears on this afternoon's Standing Committee's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1248 will be on this afternoon's agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1249, Resolution Providing for an amended agreement or agreements with S.A.I. Consulting Engineers, Inc., for costs associated with the CBD Signals Phase 4 Project, providing for payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $633,887.46, an increase of $57,999.82 from the previously passed authorization. Bill 688 of 2024. Bill 1250, Resolution Providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design and construction phases of the Safe Routes to School Program and providing for the reimbursement of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $420,000, an increase of $75,000 from the previously executed agreement federally reimbursable at 100% any municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $0. And Bill 1251, Resolution Authorizing an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $1 million from the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities to the Department of Public Works Bureau of Administration to pay for utility expenses.
And Councilwoman Warwick?
Oh, yeah. Motion to waive Rule 8 on 1250?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1250 will be on this afternoon's Standing Committee Agenda. Takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1252, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of EcoTone in the amount of $13,000 for composting services at the Homewood Health, the Active Living Center in fulfillment of the Soil Mill Pittsburgh Pilot, a component of the USDA grant.
And on behalf of myself, if we could first begin with the sponsored bill?
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation in the Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Bedford dwellings Phase 2, which consists of Bedford Phases 2A, 2B, and 2C housing development.
And now if we could read Bill 1253, which is an appointment?
Bill 1253, Resolution Appointment of Nina Gibbs as a member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission with the term to expire November 1st, 2028.
We need a motion to either approve or to interview.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment has been approved. And now for our communications.
Bill Number 1254, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending September 30, 2024. And Bill Number 1255, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended November 22, 2024.
Any read a motion to read, receive, and file?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills have been read, received, and filed. And now I want to return to proclamations with Councilwoman Smith.
John Chapman, will you come forward? Thank you, Mr. President. Stay there, you're good. I didn't realize you also live in Council President Lavelle's district. Well, if you know John Chapman, he does a lot for the City of Pittsburgh. He does a lot to help Juneteenth and all the events, concerts, everything you're seeing in the city, a lot of the activities on the city parks end of this. And so, I want to thank John for a lot of the stuff that he does across the city of Pittsburgh. Whereas, John Chapman grew up in the uptown, uptown with his two sisters and spent his entire career in public service with Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh. And whereas, John worked 12 years for Allegheny County before coming to the City of Pittsburgh. He spent eight years as an HR specialist in the Employee Relations Department and then became the manager of special events, coordinating various events, most notably the Summer Concert Series at Hartwood and South Park and the county courtyard. Additionally, John was the point of contact for the film industry when filming on county properties. And whereas, in April of 2014, John became the special events coordinator with the City of Pittsburgh. For the next nine years, he coordinated special events permits, application process, reviewing applications, conducted weekly special events committee meetings, and issuing special events permits for over 850 events annually. And whereas, John transferred to the Department of Parks and Recreation in March of 2023, which is why I'm acknowledging him, I'm trying to recognize the employees of City Parks. Whereas, he currently serves as Community Outreach and Program Development Coordinator. In this position, he has created the Community Concert Series, beginning, bringing live music to the various communities. And he has, and he currently is in the process of attaining International Festivals and Events Association, SFEE certification. And whereas, John, I want to say you also brought to Grandview Avenue, or to the Grandview Park. Whereas, John is active in various civic and community affairs, he is the founding, a founding member of the Uptown Community Action Group and served as a recording, as recording secretary. He currently serves, or was a past member of various organizations, including Epiphany Church Parish Council, St. Rosalia's BTG, and Athletic Association, Knights of Columbus, Ancient Order Hibernians, I guess you're Irish, Knights of Equity, Allegheny County Democratic Committee, and the City of Pittsburgh Democratic Committee. And he is currently a National Officer of the American Political Items Collectors. And whereas, John is a big history buff, passionate about local Pittsburgh history in particular, and currently lives in the uptown neighborhood with his wife Tammy and their three sons Connor, Joey, and Preston. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize John Chapman for his past and continued service to the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 25, 2024 to be John Chapman Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
He said, "Does he get a key to the city?" They don't even give me a key to the bathroom. You're asking the wrong one. You want to say a few words?
Sure. I'll simply say, John has always been a constant professional. He's always been extremely quick to reply. Whenever we had questions, concerns, he was always extremely helpful to my office, as well as any citizens that we sent your direction. And even when he changed departments, I didn't realize that. I would reach out to you with questions and he would politely respond. I'm no longer there, but here's who you need to be in contact with. So, always been helpful, always been efficient, been a great servant to the city, and very active in the uptown community as well, even when we've had some troubled landlords, I'll say. He was very quick to bring those to my attention. So, thank you for all you've done for the city and your community.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Say a few words?
I appreciate.
Here, here. You have to use a mic.
Just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate the honor.
Thank you. Everyone come up for the photo?
Well, I want to say just really quickly, because when I did, when I did my kickoff, right, for my campaign, I had never done an event before. I was super nervous, and I wanted everything to be like right and by the book. And it was exactly, I think I sent an email at like 6:30 in the morning, and I got a response at 7:00. And I was like, oh, great. It was just very easy and, you know. And then after that, working with you has been great. That's right, yeah.
We're going to take a photo. You have to open it up.
And Madam Clerk, we're going to read Councilman Mosley's into the record. And Madam Clerk, we're going to read Councilman Mosley's into the record.
Councilman Kohari Mosley presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 25th, 2024 to be Collab Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is going to be reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1217. Reported a committee on finance and law for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1039. Resolution amending Resolution 237 of 2021 to provide for the extension of a professional services agreement through June 30th, 2026 with ZIO Technologies for costs associated with the provision of web hosting services for the City Controller's Office at a total cost not to exceed $26,250. Bill 1149. Resolution amending Resolution Number 277 of 2023, which authorize a professional services agreement and/or contracts extension with B2G Now by increasing the total spend by $71,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $232,243. Bill 1150. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement or amendments thereto with the President and Fellows of Harvard College, acting through the Toddman Center for State and Local Government at the Harvard Kennedy School to receive technical assistance to use procurement as a lever for inclusive workforce development, job quality, and local economic empowerment at no cost to the city. Bill 1151. Resolution amending Resolution 39 of 2024, which authorize an agreement or agreements in leases and/or lease by in between the City of Pittsburgh and First Vehicle Services, a trans staff company to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet by increasing the authorized spend by $500,000 for a new total amount not to exceed $78,849,343.75 over a six-year period. Bill 1152. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank for professional services to address food insecurity at a total cost not to exceed $100,000. Bill 1153. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Ko Hin Chu in an amount not to exceed $3,425 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city emergency services recycling vehicle on April 1st, 2022. Bill 1194. Resolution amending Resolution 525 of 2024, which authorize an American Rescue Plan Act agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Parking Authority by updating the approved projects line at no total cost. Bill Number 1213. Resolution authorizing and directing the controller to encumber funds budgeted in the 2024 operating budget for disparity study for subsequent expenditures. Once the procurement process is complete, council authorizes the execution of an agreement and said agreement is duly executed and countersigned. Bill 1216. Resolution amending and supplementing Resolution 777 of 2016, effective December 29th, 2016, entitled, "Resolution Providing for the Creation of a Trust Fund for the Southside Parking Enhancement District Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditure of Such Funds. This fund is for the exclusive use of funding public safety maintenance and parking enforcement for the Southside Parking Enhancement District as shown in Exhibit A by adding additional permitted uses for trust fund dollars."
You have heard the reading and title of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bills have received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill 1218. Reported a committee on public safety and wellness for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1142. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Humane Animal Rescue for Pittsburgh, for services related to the city's spay and neuter program for community cats, total cost not to exceed $105,000 over three years. And Bill 1143. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh for services related to the city's spay and neuter program for pets, total cost not to exceed $105,000 over three years.
You have heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bills have received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1219. Reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1168. Resolution amending Resolution 56 of 2024, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account statewide to Provide Funding for the Small and Complete Street Project to Accept Grant, to Accept the Grant, Decrease the Award Amount to $999,999.46 and Authorize Necessary Expenditures." Bill 1169. Resolution amending Resolution Number 14 of 2024, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Local Share Account statewide to Provide Funding for the Purchase of Vehicles for the Pittsburgh Park Rangers. To Accept the Grant, Decrease the Award Amount to $80,000 and To Authorize Necessary Expenditures." Bill Number 1170. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic Article VII Parking Chapter 541 General Parking Regulations by Amending Section 54104B, Entitled Smart Loading Zones, to Remove the Pilot Sunset Date and Clarify Revenue Sharing Procedures. Bill 1172. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and/or Amendments with Property Owners of 2401 through 2413 Beetrow Boulevard for the Purpose of Accessing Their Private Driveway to Help Facilitate City Waste Collection Services at the Permits at No Cost to the City. Bill 1173. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement, Agreements, and/or Amendments with Antonio Jimenez, Property Owner of 4026 Ohio River Boulevard for the Purpose of Accessing Their Private Driveway to Help Facilitate City Waste Collection Services at the Permits at No Cost to the City. Bill 1174. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement, Agreements, and/or Amendments with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for the Purpose of a Land Survey and Stream Gauge Installation by the USACE at Frick Park at No Cost to the City. Bill 1175. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and De Apollonia for Professional Design Services for Cali Get Me Recreation Center's Reconstruction, City Cost Not to Exceed $675,690.68. Bill 1196. Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Hill Community Development Corporation for Costs Associated with Ray's Hill District Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $250,000 reimbursable at 80%. And Bill 1197. Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Larson Design Group, Inc. for Costs Associated with Ray's Hill District Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $2,500,000 reimbursable at 80%.
You have heard the reading and title of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bills have received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1220. Reported a committee on land use economic development for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 525. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Article One Section 902.03 Zoning Map by Changing from R1A VH Residential Single Unit Attached Very High Density District to LNC Local Neighborhood Commercial on property roughly bounded by Hamilton Avenue, Dunfermline Street, Tioga Street, Cinnabar Way, and Zenith Way, all in the Allegheny County Block Online System 13th Ward. Bill 985. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances at certain site known as Pittsburgh Stained Glass Studio located at 160 Warden Street in the West End 20th Ward City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and nears no cost to the city. And Bill 1176. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Council of the Arts for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the Creative Communities Program in an amount not to exceed $100,000 to Hire in Artists and Residents at the City. The Grant Requires an In-CAN Match of $10,000 for a Total Project Cost Not to Exceed $110,000 for the Stated Purpose.
You have heard the reading and title of the bills, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presenting the Committee of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1221. Reported a committee on Recreation, Youth and Senior Services for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 865. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Paramount Pursuits to Provide Technical Assistance to Applicants and Awardees of Projects from the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund for Some Not to Exceed $200,000 Over Two Years. And Bill 121084. Resolution Authorizing Renaming Reem Recreation Center to Dunlap Family Center.
You have heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kohari Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1222. Reported a committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for November 20th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1144. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement or Amendments thereto with the County of Allegheny, the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, the Stadium Authority of the City of Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Water, and the Public Parking Authority of Pittsburgh to Govern the Processes Associated with the Facilitation of a Pittsburgh Regional Disparity Study at No Cost to the City. Bill 1145. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement or Amendments thereto with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to Ensure Equity Contracting Program Requirements for Both Job Quality and Diverse Workforce Participation Standards on Construction Projects at No Cost to the City. Bill Number 1146. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an amended and restated Cooperation and Support Agreement with the Allegheny Regional Asset District for the Period from January 1, 2025 through December 31st, 2029 at No Cost to the City. And Bill 1147. Resolution Providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Braywood Way Project where the PWSA is overseeing the design and construction of the storm water management components as well as the railway replacement and rehabilitation, and has or will retain the services of a design consultant, construction management inspection consultant, and construction contractor for the project. The City will reimburse the PWSA for this work at a cost to the city not to exceed $324,072.09.
You have heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received a legally required number of votes, it is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions, is there anything from members? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 today. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-22138. Then tomorrow, Tuesday, November 26th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold budget hearings for the Pittsburgh Housing Authority and the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. Then Tuesday, tomorrow, at 1:00 p.m., council will hold an executive session on Bills 1236, 1237, 1238, 1239, 1240, 1241, 1242, 1243, and 1244 as it relates to litigation matters. Also on Tuesday at 1:30, council will hold budget hearings for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. And then lastly, Thursday, November 28th and 29th, city council and the clerk's office will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. With that, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.